Ms. Paul, you have the shortest stack of mail.
Oh, shit.
I guess you're the only one that...
We're all in there coming to get it.
Oh, no, I get it.
So what's going on?
No, everybody else got magazines and stuff. You must be picking them up.
Oh, magazines, for magazines. Since when did you get promoted to the first seat?
I don't know, they kind of put me around.
I said, uh, so wherever they landed, I'm sorry if I...
Oh, it doesn't matter, I'm just taking some time out.
That's all right, I can take it.
I noticed. How's your garden doing indoors?
Pretty good, we're getting rid of harvests and some lettuces.
Who's still in that big garden on the, um, next to, um, Mrs. Capo's house?
That's them.
That's them.
Is it their property that...
Yeah, she's always out there working.
I mean, she put in new...
It's huge.
Raised beds and everything.
Yeah, it's cool.
She will. You know, she has the same last name as my...
That's the only one.
My grandfather.
Yeah.
And it's such an unusual name, it's hard to believe that we wouldn't be related, but...
It's so crazy. What a small world.
Yeah, I know. When she calls up, I tell her, "Oh, my cousin, how are you?" Hi.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hey, Brian, how you doing?
Well...
Hey.
Well, like we spelled, didn't we? I think they did, you're about to put it... Well, how are you doing?
I'm good.
How are you doing?
I'm good.
How are you doing?
Thank you.
I'm lucky you sit up there too. How cold is it in here? I'm wondering when you're gonna sit up. Winter time, trying to get a coat on, right?
It's a cold look.
It's freezing.
You got plenty of snow this year.
Wow.
So hot. I like this cool weather, though.
It's so nice.
Can go in the yard now.
I know, finally.
You got a swimming pool, you can go out all the time.
Yeah, but, I mean, when it's hot, that, our backyard is the afternoon sun, and it's like, it's desert back there.
I can imagine. You want the big tree too, but that, did that shake the house much? That big tree that you...
Uh, it knocked down the gutter and, but that's about it. We gotta still do that, we've just been so busy traveling and stuff. But, thank, thankfully, it could have been a lot worse. Scared, scared me to death, though.
I had one fell in my front yard soon after I moved in, fell straight toward the street.
Good. Well, this thing, I didn't know what the noise was, I was, they were all gone and I was on the sofa. And I was like, I thought it sounded like a tornado, I'm like, what the heck is that? And then I look out the window and just, nothing but branches, and, and I'm like, are you serious?
Like, no, no, it was just random.
That's so crazy.
Mine, well, I was in the basement because we had had a tornado warning, and we didn't have a tornado with it. So we ended up to get in that tree at the time. That was the beginning, I've had three moves since, I haven't had one back over.
Yeah.
Oh, that's brown. Golden color.
Hello. Hi, Alex.
Hey, hey.
How are you?
Hey, good.
Glad to be at settled in. You good? All right. Call the meeting to order, and start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the...
The United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, here.
We've got a quorum, Floyd.
Indeed, yes.
After us, so first item on the agenda is presentations. Don't think we have any presentations. The next item is the review and approval of a minute, the minutes from September ninth.
I'm watching the way he's stepping into the chair.
Okay, Alex made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Tom made the second, all in favor? Unanimous?
No.
Oh?
I would fear so, I'm not going to.
Okay. Cynthia, not unanimous, I'm sorry. The next item on the agenda is a pu- public hearing. Do we have a public hearing? No.
No.
So for new business, the first item is the ratification of the purchase of parcel B, Church Street, on page four. So Brian, do we just, does this just need to be approved, or...
Just a motion made to ratify.
Okay, so we need a motion made to ratify the purchase.
Make a motion to ratify the purchase of the property.
Okay, Tom made a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Can we clarify that utilizing the SPOS 2019 funds?
Okay, yes.
To use the SPOS, the SPOS 2019 funds. In addition to the previous.
We got it.
I think Tom...
I'll second.
Polly, second, all in favor? Unanimous? Right?
Can I ask a, just a quick question? We don't need to tinker with the zoning of that due to...
Well, that's up to you, I mean, um, I would, we'd have to go back, what is, what is the piece across the street zone?
I would have to look it up here.
I might have to look it up.
It's, it's, yeah, I think it's downtown commercial.
I just would have to look and see.
Yeah, we can do that.
We don't, we don't have to.
You don't have to.
I seem to recall you saying that we have to kind of jump through some hoops to...
Well, you have to follow, you have to follow the same procedure anybody else does.
Okay, if we're...
So you'd have to advertise, spend the money on the advertising. Yeah.
Okay, there's no advantage of doing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next item is the new Sharpsburg Town motto.
Are we supposed to choose from there, so, hold on.
Um, no, so the DDA selected, they voted and, um, came up with five to present to us. Um, and, and they want us to choose one of the five.
I like the top two best.
You like the top two best?
Yep, I bet. Was that the order that they chose on the one, or do you know?
Um, April was here.
Order as presented, um...
Um, there was over a hundred submitted, and those are five from the hundred submitted.
Was that John's choice?
The five?
Yeah, in the order.
No, we didn't, we, we didn't put any specific order.
They were your top five.
They were our top five, yes.
And most of them were also submitted several times, so that, you know, it was obviously everyone else's, you know, so, um...
I like the top two, but the thing I liked about the second one, I like the first one best, but I like the second one because it mentioned the town and not the zip code.
Yeah.
When I was, when you say Sharpsburg now, getting used to be that way, that you can go all the way to Camden Gate.
Exactly.
So, but my choice is still one of the first two.
Yeah, I like the second one myself.
Yeah.
Personally, the second one's my favorite. How about you, Alex?
I'm not big on mottos. But, seems like everyone likes the second one, that's fine with me.
Okay, so, um, can we make a motion to officially adopt Sharpsburg Small Town Big Heart as the town motto?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Polly made the motion, Tom seconded, all in favor? All right. That's exciting. Yeah, that's easy.
That's the official one?
One thing we didn't have was, we could have did.
The next item is the consideration of the new Arbor Valley agreement, pages nine through eighteen. Lloyd, do you want to explain the addendum part?
I'll be glad to. The reason it's, uh, as lengthy as it is is because in the addendum, it actually refers to Exhibit A as the lease agreement. I'll just put it in there as a reference, you can see lease agreement. Um, we are not amending the lease agreement, but we are putting an addendum, an amendment onto this to address the concerns that came to us earlier. You may recall, they have a bathroom that's not functioning, and they offered at their own expense to remodel basically that building, remove the bathroom, and put in storage. And so this is addressing that. They're doing it at their expense, they're removing the porta potty, or at this point probably have already removed it, and they're allowed to use the bathrooms out here as necessary. So all this agreement does is formalize what we've already discussed. Uh, once it's approved by you, the Council, I can get it over to Arbor Valley, have them sign off on it, and they can go about their business. Um, but that's really just, uh, that we already discussed before. Just need to get you guys' approval.
So we'll need a motion on that.
I'm making a motion to accept the agreement as submitted.
Okay, so Tom made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Alex, second, all in favor? Everyone but Cynthia.
Is that an extension or a composition?
I was just thinking, I mean...
Okay, okay. All right, so, four oh...
They're talking about using the one outside, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I thought it was an issue about keeping it locked all the time.
I'm sorry?
I thought we had the issue about keeping it locked.
We do have that issue, but they still need a bathroom also, and in this case, they do lease from us.
Yeah, okay.
It is locked, but it's, they have the combo.
Have the code coming in, it'll lock. Yes, ma'am.
You have my security key, ain't we?
That's coming up.
I know. Okay.
Five oh, okay.
Okay. Um, so the next item is the security upgrades to Town Hall and the library. So, as you guys know, this is something that, um, we've kind of tossed around several times. Um... And, Lloyd, do you want to kind of, do you want to tell them about the...
Sure.
The layers and what they're...
This isn't the first crack that we've had at trying to get security over here, and I think it's been prompted because, um, with the recent power spikes, we've had it actually knock down our camera system as well. So, to me, this is one of those critical points where we need to actually bring security to this building, but also outside. I started trying to enhance our security back in 2022, but the cost was seen at that time as prohibitive. But, at that time also, we actually had functioning cameras and we were, we were able to get by, now we don't even have that. We have, and I want to remind you that not only do we have this security, but we also have flooring that's coming up as well, and we have eight thousand nine hundred ninety dollars of ARPA money that we still have to spend or allocate. So, eight thousand nine hundred ninety, whether we do it on this or the other. My thought is that we put that ARPA on to the security. The reason is because it would also go into the Town Hall, and I think that that's where you could justify it. Over the course of the years, as I've indicated, we've reached out to various companies, we've had various ideas that have come in on how we can bring in security. Uh, but again, it was seen as cost prohibitive, so it basically was backfinched for a while. I tried to resurrect it with those companies again over the past month or so, reached out to four companies asking for renewed rates. Of the four, it was Ultimate Security, Crown Security, Fayette, and Advanced Audio. Of those four, only two replied back with renewed rates, that would be Ultimate Security and Crown. Crown Security, uh, I, I gave on page twenty, you'll see a breakdown, there are three different options you have. Crown Security, uh, and, and the details will follow in the subsequent pages, to do the work would be fifteen thousand four hundred fifty. And that would bring security and cameras, uh, eight cameras essentially to this location, and then security to the library. Again, it costs fifteen thousand four fifty, and they do annual monitoring, annual monitoring is eight hundred sixty-three dollars. These cameras, as I understand it, are connected by Wi-Fi, so there's no wiring that's involved. Ultimate Security gave us two options, and you'll see them, that's the middle option and the one to the far right. They gave us two options, the second, or the, I should say, option number one, or the one that's in the middle on page twenty, gives us, um, eight cameras, eight cameras. And the cost to do the work, and eight, by the way, would be matching essentially camera for camera that we already have, the cost for the work is eleven thousand eight hundred fifty. But, they're recommending for an additional two thousand, you can get what is called CAT, um, you can get fiber wiring that will replace your CAT six wiring. With all these electrical out, the sparks that we've had, and knocking out cameras, one of the reasons we're even having this conversation, for additional two thousand, meaning thirteen thousand dollars, um, they will give us fiber wiring, which will help mitigate these electrical wire, you know, these electrical issues, won't blow out our cameras again. I know there's a lot to what I'm saying, but two thousand dollars extra, that's, that's the same on both quotes, will get us better wiring so that we don't have these electrical issues and effects of electrical issues again. Option one, Ultimate Security, the middle one, it's eleven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars to do the job, annual monitoring is six hundred dollars, as opposed to the other quote of eight sixty-three. The last, uh, option that we have from Ultimate Security, option two, it increases the number of cameras from eight to fourteen, so the cost is also going to increase. This time to sixteen thousand six fifty with CAT six wiring, or eighteen thousand six fifty with the enhanced wiring. Uh, and again, six hundred dollars a month, uh, annual, on, six hundred dollars annually for the, um, monitoring of both the library and here. And looking at it, I think that you have the differences between what you currently have versus what we now have now, we have a larger parking lot, we have more use at the library. Um, in my mind, the way I see it, I think you would probably be better served with the option two, Ultimate Security. It is the more expensive in every respect, but I think you get probably more for your buck. Um, you would get fourteen cameras, for a thousand dollars less, you would get, um, eight cameras as opposed to fourteen if you go with Crown Security. I just think, dollar, buck for buck, I think you're going to be better with Ultimate Security.
Where were we thinking we were going to put the extra cameras, were we gonna, um...
And, and we now have a larger parking lot. Whereas before, it was almost like a dirt field.
Right.
Larger parking lot, you're going to have whatever enhancements we may put out there eventually, and it covers all aspects of that parking lot.
Okay.
That's what it should do.
Probably can cover the beck and house as well, can't you?
At the time we were talking about it, it wasn't really under consideration because we were talking about taking it down, but I think you could probably turn a camera one way to another and catch it. So, my recommendation is utilize the rest of your ARPA, eight thousand eight, eight thousand nine hundred ninety. Utilize that, use the difference from your SPOS 2019, that's because it will affect this room and the parking lot as well. So you're going to, we're going to break the funds out of ARPA and SPOS is my thought process on how we can pay for this.
And that covers the whole, I mean, SPOS.
I'm sorry?
Then there's, nothing comes out of our general budget.
Not out of our general...
Once we get the SPOS involved.
Right.
Uh, kind of unsure about front door access, um, is that talking about this door or this door?
So, it's a good question, so...
This door we've talked a lot about.
What you have a...
Replacing, remodeling, and all that, and that seems like...
We're going to be changing that door a little bit as we're, as we're talking about it, but really, this building here is our issue. Because you have this room that's often rented, and you have that that should never have anybody in there, without staff and official business. And so they have to bifurcate how they're doing it, so that on weekends, for instance, if somebody comes in, it's not setting that alarm off, but they have to break it up, and so, you have to find a way to keep that door locked, separate from that one. And that's why they have the two different ones that are up there. Now, if we're going to change the doors, is that going to affect them? It may, but this is what I have already.
It's not going to affect it much.
Right. But the one, but that is one of the bigger issues for us, is, uh, we don't want to be getting calls at one in the morning because the renter closed the door, or trying, you know? If, if that's like...
Request the exit button, request to exit motion inside a door to let people out, which door is that referring to?
My understanding is that door, okay.
These are all Wi-Fi?
No, so the Crown Security is Wi-Fi, Ultimate Security is, is hardwired.
Okay.
With the fiber?
With the fiber, if you go for two thousand dollar enhanced, right?
And you said that would involve this trouble, what's blown out in his previous...
As has been reported to me, yes, ma'am. I, I don't know that there's anything guaranteed, but...
No, but I wanted, but when you say, I thought you said when you were reading, reading that it would stop. We have those shortages.
We do, yes.
From time to time, fairly frequently, and that's what is the issue with our others. Did you say this one, ultimate two, would get around that, or not?
It, it should, so, the reason, part of the reason cameras are out, when they did the parking lot, they tore the wiring underneath it.
Yeah, I remember that.
Part one, right? But when I had them come out, in fact, what they've said is that the wiring that was there was CAT six wiring, and according to them, it's good, and it's okay, it'll work. But if there's lightning, if there's a sparking, all that sort of stuff, then it could do the blowout again. And so that's why they want to do the fiber thing.
I like that, I like, I like that, and two, Ultimate Security is one that I like.
Right.
Yeah, what I...
And so, and so, is it a dead stop? I don't know that anything is, but at least we know that it's better quality, that shouldn't be able to handle the issue.
I'm going to make the motion then that we accept that, um, Ultimate Security option two.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept...
You're going to include that if you're going to fund it rightfully?
Yes.
Should we make a motion with where the money comes from?
Um, utilizing ARPA funds in the amount of eight thousand nine, ninety, the remainder of the balance to be paid by SPOS 2019.
So Polly made a motion to accept the Ultimate Security option two with eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars coming from ARPA, and the remaining coming from the SPOS 2022, right?
2019.
2019. Do we have a second?
This for option two?
Yes.
Yes. I'll say like that.
Okay, Alex, you have the second, all in favor? Unanimous?
All right, I'll get a hold of it in the morning, thank you.
Um, the next item on the agenda is replacing, the replacement of floor, flooring, I cannot talk tonight, the community center and Town Hall. We could talk about this for a while as well, um, and we had one, so we, how many do we have, two on all this?
We now have three.
Okay, perfect, so one just came in, right?
One came in around four thirty today.
Yeah, perfect. So, um, each quote specifies what, uh, they're suggesting, we've got the, um, let's see here.
So on page thirty-one, where you'll see the two quotes, and then I have an email that I've just received, like I said, today, actually, four twelve today, and it should be at your desk as well. Called New Business Number Five, on across the top, and highlighted at the bottom, thirteen thousand four hundred.
Okay, so this is for... Is this for the community center and the office?
So we've received, um, three quotes now, two of the quotes are only for the community center, and then the, the concrete design is the only one who came back and gave us a quote for the Town Hall.
Okay.
And so we have, um, three quotes, concrete by design, start with them, they're the only ones who gave us a quote for the Town Hall, and if you look on page thirty-one, uh, they're quoting, to do this floor is twenty-five thousand six eighty-nine. We had a question about the substrate, what's underneath this wood that you see. They don't anticipate we'll have to even worry about that, but they gave us a quote, just in case they start pulling it up and see they have to work on the substrate, it's an additional three thousand five thirty-two.
Okay.
They don't think they're going to have to go there, and like I said, with the Town Hall, that, they're the only ones who gave us a quote on Town Hall, five thousand five forty-seven. Um, I believe Ray Shavers, Tom, I think you worked with him, and I don't know if he, I don't know if he was giving a quote for Town Hall or not, I haven't received that. And the only other one so far is Castillon, they just came in today, it's only for this floor, and it's thirteen thousand four hundred. And, really, this has been more of a Angie, that's why she's here, and a Julie project, they have questions they can probably answer a little bit better than I can off of the overall file.
I just want to say, we, I contacted personally nine different people to get, to get what we got, so it was, it was a lot of effort to get that, you know, the nine people done.
Yeah.
It was through them, and that's all we got, so we did our due diligence as far as trying to find as many people as we could to give us bids for the flooring.
Yeah.
The other thing that I see is concrete by design does give warranty to the work.
I like that.
From what I've read, I don't see warranty coming from the other two. Doesn't mean they don't, it's just that they're paying for it provided to us, I don't see anything like warranty off of that.
Well, the one thing that, you know, I have in the back of my mind is, obviously, this floor gets a lot of wear, dancing and rental, so, you know, if we're going to spend the money, I think we need to, you know, spend the money on something that's going to hold... So, you know, if we're gonna spend the money, I think we need to, you know, spend the money on something that's gonna hold up, that we know and, you know, does have that warranty, that's nice.
I agree. I don't wanna be replacing it every five years.
No.
Are the, are the concrete by design and the other concrete floor, those comparable?
As far as I know, I'll let the two ladies that are working on it give you more of a answer to that.
Are they comparable? Is it, I mean, are we comparing apples and apples?
As far as the job itself.
As far as putting in the.
I love epoxy coatings.
I, I feel more confident with concrete by design because they have all their ducks in a, in a row. They did, she, the lady who came, um, was very um, detailed about what they were able to do and the, the, the kind of service that they would provide, the length of coverage that they would, I think it's, it was like ten years or something plus, if I can remember, if I remember correctly.
Part of it is theirs, and part of it is manufactured, so warranty across the product.
Right, correct.
But every one of them are reliable, given the opportunity to come into this room and go into the other room, observe it, take measurements, give recommendations, every single one, and so.
It's neither here nor there, but I, I contacted Ray because I, I didn't know what kind of cost rule we're looking at for the concrete, and I didn't wanna do concrete. Uh, Ray's is, it's not the same as this, but it's a laminate.
Right.
I, I wanted to show y'all what the, give you something to compare it to.
Yeah.
How much choice do we have? I'm sure we have all the kind of, all the choices in the world, but as, as far, as far as what it looks like, so I sure don't wanna make it look crummy.
Oh no, Alex, it's beautiful.
It's very nice.
Is it?
They gave us some samples, and we chose one that we can go look at, and, you know, we can get my mom to check it out, but it's beautiful.
Yeah, okay.
And they've done local work, businesses around the area.
They can highly recommend it, yeah.
Yeah.
If we're talking concrete by design, for instance, they've, they've laid um, over at the Atlanta Zoo. Um, on the outside, they put the zoo flooring in over there. Uh, we actually reached out, they've done work for Fayette County Recreation Department, so we actually had Angie who called and spoke to Anita Godby, who was the Director of Recreation, to see what her thoughts were, she highly recommends them. Um, it seems to me that they're a pretty quality company from all that I can gather.
The follow-up has been very nice.
And they've been extremely, uh, of, of the companies that we've reached out to, of course, nine of them have reached out to, at this point, three have replied. And of my experience, the concrete by design has been the most responsive to us.
She called today again to, she said, your meeting was last week, she didn't know it was canceled, postponed to check, and I told her it was tonight, so she said she'd follow up again, so. She came out twice, which is really nice.
Yeah.
Are y'all wanting to, wanting to extend it even to offices?
I think so.
I think the thought process is when you walk into the office, it's old ragged carpet that's in there, and if we're already replacing the furniture, then this will be a great time as we're, if we're emptying it out and putting new furniture in, put a floor in as well, and bring the whole thing.
Is that included in this quote?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the only one who's given a reply to the town hall is that concrete by design.
So that'll be wall to wall.
Yes.
The other, the other thing too, if we ever build a new town hall, that area will be nice and finished. That can serve as a staging area for people who wanna get dressed, for people who are having parties and, and so forth. That would be service for, as an extension for the facility, so that would be a nice little extra thing that we could do. Which a lot of them, I've had people say, can, is there a place that I can get dressed, and we don't have that, so that would be a nice solution for that. And would ex, would definitely increase the value of the use of the facility.
That's a great point.
I doubt you, I doubt you could get this, um, this carpet for five thousand dollars, I doubt you could.
Right.
Right, correct.
Probably not.
Right.
And the way this other job was done, they didn't do the utility room, they didn't do the bathrooms, they didn't do the lobby and the closet, and this would cover all the areas.
What's the recommendation on the uh, budget wise that we're paying for it?
Well, this community center right here, part of SLOSS twenty nineteen again allows for, you know, community building type functions. I think it certainly could come under SLOSS. My personal question is more along the line of the town hall, town hall. My personal, I think we'll be okay with even SLOSS with that, but if need be, I would say pull that from general. But either way, I think the twenty five thousand, if that's who are going with concrete by design, I would say at least the twenty five thousand is lost, if not whole, it could. I don't know if Brad, if he wants to weigh in on that part, but that's my thought.
Who are we gonna lean on for like, deciding whether it's Flake or Brendel, or are we gonna kind of go off what their designer says, they think fits the space, or, you know, do we have a, anyone have a, I know.
We've already worked at some samples, but I'm willing to let.
Yeah.
I'm willing to let.
Oh, I don't have no vulnerability, I'm just curious, you know.
The product that they recommended for durability and for what we use it for came with, I don't know, several colors, it, it was a, you know.
And it would match what we've got here as far as.
It's neutral and, you know, not too.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be graded so that it's not slippery.
Yes.
For people who are dancing, parties and so forth as well, so it's not gonna be slippery.
Are you talking about color?
Yeah, color and style, I know they do Flake or Brendel or.
It kinda looks like a um, marble, not like a.
I'm wondering who we're gonna lean on to make that final call of like, that's the, the color Flake we're gonna put into it.
Elizabeth and myself and Angie and.
And we can get, my mom that picked out the colors in here, we can get her.
Yeah, for the design of the colors that are in here.
I'm staying.
Just wanna make sure we're. Me too, yeah, just wanna make sure we're. You're saying, hey, put in.
We're trying, purple and yellow floors.
I, I, I just beat up that everybody.
Imagine if you don't like it.
Inside joke.
Yeah, purple logo will not be good color.
No.
How about lighters on the, on the floor, what do they suggest on that, like?
Very little name that, um, very little, so that's one of the things we were looking at, very little. Every now and again, we probably have to call a professional um, custodial company who would come in to a, a, essentially. Uh, but as far, that was one of our big questions, because as you can see with the floor in here, it's all pretty jacked when they try to do it. This one's supposed to be minimal as well. So I'm not trying to be redundant, it's just that was one of our questions.
That's why I asked, because it's really jacked.
And it has to be somebody who's professionally would know how to do it, not somebody, yeah.
Somebody's brother-in-law with a buffer.
Right, no, no, nobody's brother-in-law with a buffer. Um, so we have a, a custodial company, and they recommended a couple more as well that can help out. But one of the features is, as you know, we rent this place out, and from time to time you will get somebody who will rent it and not clean it up, and we get the phone call and we rented it and it wasn't cleaned up, this one is done in such a way, and Angie helped me remember, but I believe it was done in such a way that even if they made it a mess and walked away with very minimal cleaning, uh, you would almost not be able to tell it if you were the next person who had been renting. So you'd have that aspect.
We're not gonna tell the renters that.
How's, how's the turnaround?
We did want to be clean.
Uh, based, what did they say, six, was it six weeks?
Was it?
Or am I mixing that up with somebody?
That's the furniture.
That's the furniture, okay.
Yeah, three days.
Yeah, forty-eight hours, um, until, until the service is ready for foot in heavy traffic. So, two days um, for completion. Yeah, so two days and forty-eight hours until, to dry, I guess, in here.
So that would necessitate as well that there may be a period where we have to cancel some classes or not rent the place out for a weekend or whatever time it may take for us to get a floor out and move the other end.
We're trying to schedule between Monday and Friday because the holidays are coming up, and if we are doing this before the holidays, we've got our, our weekend pretty much. We've got a weekend for.
Yeah.
We've got November four, we've got December four, so.
So are they anticipating doing this before the election day?
No.
No.
Okay.
There's, yeah, we're not gonna even risk it.
No.
So we wanna do it before the end of year.
Yes.
So, yeah. Right.
Yes, that's what we're hoping for, and the other thing, especially if we go with the town hall, we, it would be better coordinated so that we get the furniture outs. Then they can get the floor in and bring the furniture in, and the furniture itself has, I think, about a six week turnaround time too.
Yes.
So, at least with the town hall part, it would be about six weeks before we even see any work done. And of course, if we're moving everything out, putting it all back in, that would affect operations, I hope we're gonna get here, but it would be a good start to the new year.
They are gonna do that too though, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
We are coordinating the events.
We're coordinating, if, if the town hall part of it is approved, then we're coordinating with the furniture company and the flooring company, come out here with all the stuff and then put in the floors, and that's good.
So also, we talked about having town hall, town hall closed for a while, we gonna have a two?
We can work from home and we, you know, whatever.
So in times when we haven't been here, we've been able to get phone calls or emails from our house.
Yeah.
As far as working with computers, doing budget stuff like that, are limited, very honestly, we don't have that capability. But um, as far as the, at least the phones won't be left neglected or anything like that, we can do that from home. Uh, but as far as doing budgets or banking or anything, that's on these computers that are here, and we don't have a way to do it from the house.
Since I wasn't here last meeting, um, I bet I spoke about the furniture and stuff, um, so when we get ready to do the furniture and the floor, what are our plans on storing the files and the, all the files and that?
Oh, I can update you on that, okay. That was part of the furniture quote.
Okay.
So we have this back room that's behind the, uh, the bu, the outside building that has the bathrooms in it, we have a storage room. And we ordered, part of the furniture quote was for the storage shelves to be put, we, we've cleaned out that room. And we've ordered heavy-duty shelving to go into that room, so that is already ordered. So we already started putting files in boxes, and they'll be going out there.
They'll be going out there and walking there.
So there is a turnaround time, he said approximately five to six weeks on that, so we, we placed the order last week. And that's where our files.
Will it be in the room?
Oh yeah, oh yeah, and there's ten heavy-duty shelves that we ordered, and we already ordered banker's boxes, and I started the process of going through files, shredding, you know, all that. And he's going to come as we empty, he'll come to get those old metal cabinets out.
Right, it's part of the agreement is that he would get the old furniture, right, that was a part of the agreement, so anytime we get one of these shelves emptied or get a, um, filing cabinet that we're replacing emptied out, he's coming and getting it to already start, you know, offsetting some of that stuff too.
So um, we, we need a motion for the flooring.
I'll make a motion that we accept uh, the quote from concrete by design as laid out here and allocate the SLOSS twenty nineteen funds.
Okay.
To pay for that, if possible.
Yeah.
Good, to include this one back here.
Yes, everything that they quoted.
Including town hall, yeah, community center, town hall.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Alex made a motion, Tom had the second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we look good. All right. Um, the next item is the upgrade to the town hall library phone system.
Yeah, so I actually get the presentation, that's with some good news, making some good progress, but this one seems to me um, almost a no-brainer, okay, but I'm gonna make it even a bigger no-brainer in a second. So when a person calls here, we have two phones, two. One that is hardwired that I can get, and the other one is a shared phone between Julie and Angie, and that can be its own problem. It just can't, we're passing phones around and chasing phones down, and who's got what phone and you know, we live in a time whenever you call the place normally and you press one, you can talk to Floyd or two and Julie or however, right, and in our world, we're not that way. So I've asked um, to look into what we can do as an option, and what we can do is enhance our phone system. And it will be like what you would normally expect if you called any government or business, it will give you a prompt, you know, welcome to Scherzberg, what have you. If you wanna talk to Floyd, press one, if you have this question, press two. It also will send an option to call the library, whereas before we had to tell people to hang up and dial a different number, it now just forwards it over. If somebody wants to talk to the mayor, press the button number, what for perhaps, and it will actually reach out to the mayor, and they don't have to go to us, and they can bypass us, they go to the mayor if she, if they were like. It basically just steps us up.
To her, to her cell phone or the, to the number back there in office?
Uh, to herself, she, herself.
Well, it would, wouldn't it forward, like press, like, press one for the mayor?
Yeah, hit forward. Right.
Forwards.
And it forwards over to the mayor.
If she wants.
And it's up to her, but it doesn't give, but it doesn't give away her number, so, you know, that's one of the things we have to protect, is you guys' number, part of the open record. But end of the day, if they wanna get ahold of her, they can as well.
Or leave her a message.
Or they can leave her a message. The quote that we received, so let me say this, we already have um, a phone system through Broadvoice. Uh, through Broadvoice, and that cost is roughly a hundred twenty-nine dollars a month. Broadvoice is going away with this and will be replaced with a company called GoTo, and with GoTo, um, it's a hundred and forty-seven dollars a month, so it's enhanced. But that hundred forty-seven includes tax, and we're tax exempt, so we're gonna reduce that down to one thirty-six a month. So to enhance our phones and to bring us into modern day is an additional seven dollars a month for the town.
No, that's too much.
It's all too much, right? Seven dollars a month, oh, but it gets better than that, okay?
But wait.
But wait, there's more, I have a page out here, you guys, you may see it here, it's, I'll label it at the top, new business six, okay?
It's separate.
It's separate, that I threw out there today, it's got my handwriting all over it, new business six, it also talks about the internet, okay? For town hall, the internet monthly is ninety-nine dollars. Uh, I asked Julie to take a look and to see what we can do to do better, I was looking at the bills and saying it didn't make much sense for paying. Um, the bill for the town hall will increase to a hundred and fifteen. Uh, I know there's a line item B called monthly, I, I'm sorry, there's a line item number C, add a mobile device, we don't need it, that's something they said, we, you know, take a phone home over the weekend, we really don't need it, so we're gonna take that away. So the estimated cost is a hundred and fifteen, goes from ninety-nine dollars to a hundred and fifteen, okay? But where the savings comes in is for the library, the library's bill monthly is a hundred and thirty-four dollars. It's more for the library than here. With this new reset, it drops it down from a hundred and thirty-four to fifty-nine ninety-nine, I know that sounded like a commercial. That's the savings of seventy-four ninety-nine a month, savings. And then this phone that we just talked about is a slight increase again, um, so at the bottom, I just did quick math, and you'll see that some of this raises, some of the, so the, the costs are gonna raise in some areas and lower in others. But it's annually a savings of hu, of five hundred and one dollars, annual savings. And not only do we save money, but it brings us to the real world.
I have a question, sorry. Now, so the library decreases because they're gonna change the address, have its own account, is that the reason why?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
So their debit decreased from a hundred thirty-four fifty-nine.
They were charging us for things like um, spectrum TV. That nobody uses, right? It was things like that, that just, it made no sense, and so that's what we looked at and said, let's reduce this, nobody's watching TV up there, to my knowledge. Um, then it also adds wifi in, the only difference is that there is a one-time fee of ninety-nine dollars to have wifi up there as well, uh, that's a one-time fee.
But with the phone, you no longer have a landline over there, they had their own number too, you know, through Broigles, so.
The nice thing about this too is that people who wanna get ahold of me for the community center, which a lot of the calls come in for the community center, they go directly to my voicemail, so they don't have to answer the phone, they don't have to take messages, or Floyd doesn't have to send it via email to me. So that, that's the nice thing about it, it relieves the stress of my part of what I do here, and it's a lot, because I, I, we have a lot of people coming.
Another thing that would really be too is that you answer the phone through your computer.
You have that capability of answering it through your computer.
So the phone, like the phone rang, and you just press a button on your computer, and you got the phone call. So it's really cool, I mean, it really is like twenty-first century.
So in my mind, I would have already approved it, except for it's an agreement, therefore, I don't think I have that authority to approve agreements, so I'm bringing it to you guys.
Yeah.
To say, how about we save a hundred and one dollars annually, you know, come. To say, how about we save a hundred and one dollars annually and come up to the real world?
I love it.
Five hundred and one dollars and come up to the real world.
Yeah.
So all I need is authority for either me or mayor to assign the agreement so he can make this happen.
Alright, so we need a motion to.
Why don't you just do it?
Huh?
Why don't you just do it? I have rented, you need all the authorities.
Do it, we have a motion going, or?
Well, I mean, I would have already done it, but I don't have that, I don't think I have that authority.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, Tom made a motion.
Sorry.
Polly, the second, all in favor, unanimous, alright.
There we go, now we have phones, floors, and hand security, guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You've made me a happy course, not a little score anymore, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is old business, we don't have anything on there, so public comments. Anybody?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh polling of the council, you want to go first, Tom?
Yeah, I've got a couple of quickies, uh what about the electricity outside, did y'all solve that?
We think we solved it. So what we think occurred, I did bring in an electrician to take a look, I have not received a new Georgia power bill to confirm what I'm about to tell you. There really won't be a way to know for sure until I do get that new bill. But it was a component that was in the timer box that was out there that was going bad and firing off the lights at all hours, day and night. And so to that end, we got that fixed, we think that's the problem, and I will know for sure when I get the next bill in.
Okay, second thing I had was, I noticed the the county road crews up up and down Tarrentine, they mark a road with red marks, that's all about.
Remember uh several months ago, we had um Mayor Cole who came in and gave us a list of projects uh that he had noticed. And council directed me to talk to county, to the county, that was the county working on getting us an estimate on what they can do. And taking a look at the work now, so that was part of their effort to get us a larger answer.
Alright, um. I wanted to say that uh we're at a point with the light level, we can open it, we've got enough volunteers to keep it open a little bit. And I can go down, you know, some and keep that open a little bit, so what should we do, coordinate that with Floyd?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about volunteers?
Well, we got volunteers, we vetted most of them, and some of them, I mean, they've, you've got the uh investigation of their character. We've got that taken care of, but we've got people that'll come in, count, you know, a couple days a week, and it's time to do it, we're at that point.
So we'll open the doors then.
Alright, I'll uh, I'll, I'll get with those folks.
Okay.
We'll come, try to come up with a schedule.
What about loophole, where do we stand with that?
Uh that's, that is something we'll have to, we're gonna introduce it.
Okay.
We uh we've talked to those folks and before we know what we've gotta do to get that going.
Okay.
And uh, I'm gonna go up to uh county and sign it myself, the county.
Okay.
So that I'll know exactly how it works, and have a pretty good idea now, and they've given me access to it.
Okay.
But uh, that's, that's coming, I mean, that's like imminent.
That's the next.
That's all part of, part of.
Okay.
So we've got these big scissors, we can do a ribbon, and we can do an opening, and do pictures, put it on Facebook, love it. Like an open, an opener, re-open.
We can get across a huge pair of scissors in there, so.
Yeah, so we could actually use it for that.
We had them, they were just big, and they work.
We could bring an opening in the place.
Alright, then I have, I have two more quickies, did y'all talk to the county, the the school board or the people at the county about the audio visual folks coming in?
No, that's frankly something that just sort of was on the radar and dropped off.
Okay, uh other thing, is any more thoughts on the purple lots yet?
So I reached out to a company um about a week ago asking for an an assessment of how much that thing costs. There are some thoughts that are floating out there, but it seems before we can really make a judgment on what we need to do, we need to know what it's really worth first. And I've looked on the internet for some answers, but I get a hodgepodge of answers. So I really want somebody who knows their business to take a look and say, this thing is worth X amount of dollars. Cause whatever they come back with as an amount will determine what we can or can't do with it.
Well, once you determine that, and we might be able to trade it for work on that new door.
Okay.
In other words, have the contractor say, okay, I'll, I'll do this new door for ten thousand dollars, and give you a credit for five thousand for the.
Right.
Isor?
Is the, what is referring to is the purple tractor box. No, he's referring to the purple tractor box.
It's a picture of Elizabeth.
But didn't the school paint that for us? Didn't the school paint that?
Yeah, somebody, it's a school day, I've got that.
Is it that bad?
Yeah, it's awful.
That's all I have.
We'll connect to that.
But it's, oh, I mean, it's, all that's being stored in there is trash, so, you know.
So we just won't give it to them? All the Christmas stuff is in there too?
Well, you have Christmas stuff that's in there, you've got some things that you probably need, but mostly it's, the ping pong tables in there, and I think old furniture's in there, all kinds of stuff.
So we just wanna get rid of it, we just wanna paint it, but when?
What's that?
The machine that used to tear this floor out was in there.
Oh, really?
Really?
Uh.
Somebody done that.
That's first step to say.
Yeah, yes.
And the fan.
And yeah, and we have these big huge, remember the fans that were back here too, need to get rid of them as well.
So how do we get rid of them?
Think we'd have to take a assessment of what those things cost, declare a surplus and put a resolution out there, declare a surplus if they meet the criteria. That's really how you get rid of this stuff. I know it's a long way around, but that's.
But we, we've gotta do that, because.
Hmm? Wait a minute.
Next month?
Hmm?
Next month?
Well, you're gonna start getting assessments on the town. Yeah, that's what we need to do, is find out what the stuff is worth too and then claim a surplus.
We'll do that together, Julie.
Have to declare it surplus or declare it trash or something?
Same thing, essentially.
Somebody wants it, can they come and get it, or?
Depends, you're.
Sounds like we need to do a inventory of.
We're making, making, trying to get these things.
And what we plan to surplus and what we consider trash, you know, it'd be nice to have a list that indicated what's.
We need to start looking through that soon.
So when we trash, are we gonna trash it, or are we gonna give it to, to some charity?
And it comes down to what's worth, that's the first thought, is how much does this thing worth, and then it determines what we can do with it.
There's a tremendous amount of stuff in there that is not gonna, no argument at all, it's gonna be trashed.
Yep.
Broken lumber pieces, I mean, you know, you've been in there.
Hmm, yeah, there's a lot of stuff and there's trash, but then there's other things that on the street signs we talked about and get rid of that.
There's lots, there's actually a good amount of signs in there in there, that we sell.
A lot of the new Christmas stuff that DDA bought is in there too, we have probably like four Christmas trees in there. Probably maybe fifteen to twenty totes of like garland that goes outside, I mean, there's a lot of Christmas stuff. I would actually say that the Christmas stuff, along with some files that belong to the town, are probably like the only thing in there that's.
Worth anything.
Worth anything, all the, there's probably seven bookshelves from the library, the big tall ones that were in the middle of the room are in there.
Yeah.
There's a lot in there.
Uh, why don't we have a clean out the trailer day, and we can all volunteer to come clean out the trailer and throw away the obvious stuff and.
I think we're, but we can't do that till we.
Well, I think if it's broken lumber, I mean, I don't see that that's an issue, but if it's furniture, if it's the the street sign, if it's that sort of stuff, you have to.
Okay.
Start assessing what that really is worth.
The new fans are a hundred and twenty nine ninety nine, the new metal fans.
Remember those big ones that were there, those tall ones? So I think we put that on a list, and so we can clear, those are plus, and then you can find out who wants them, but these are thoughts.
List everything else, and we know what we got.
Exactly.
Only what we, what is obvious to be thrown out.
And throw that stuff out.
And then go forth and do what we have to do.
Now, it does open a question, if we get rid of the Isor, as we said, then what do we do with the Christmas stuff, and what do we do with? The legitimate stuff that's in there, because there won't be a lot of room to put Christmas in here, for instance, right, so.
And we ever thought about just hiding it somewhere and still being able to use it?
Yeah, we talked about putting it on the tape line.
There was a question about putting it on the tape line, or.
If it's stored, you shouldn't want to.
If it's something that is, if it's something that can be stored, but uh that's just another thought, if it's, it's not open record, it's nothing that. I doubt anybody would come and take a Christmas tree, for instance, right? It may be one of those things just go over to U-Haul and get a U-Haul uh storage shed and. You know, one of some of those rental places and just, you can put it in there, you have access to it that way, it's a thought.
So long term too, remember, we also have the Christmas tree that's like, the Christmas tree.
The huge one.
The one that's like twenty feet high, and right now Shep is storing it at his house in two sections. And so we eventually are also, the DDA is gonna have to figure out some long-term storage for that too. Um he's fixing it this year because the lights were intermittently working, um but it's like a Christmas tree that Sanoi had it in a barn. Like in a big barn, so we're gonna have to figure out that long term as well, make some kind of off-site storage for. Towns, things.
That's not, that's not an actual issue.
No, no.
So maybe it's, we find a temporary place to store the Christmas until we.
Yeah.
You know. I mean, how, how much, is it a, is it a lot of Christmas stuff?
Um, I would say it's a lot, it's, it's more than that.
Is it a lot?
We bought a lot of new girl in last year.
We got a lot of new stuff. There's some big tournaments.
Why don't we, why don't we wait until after the holidays about the purple container? And until we can put our ducks in a row.
Good idea.
That buzzes a little bit at times too.
We can have an actually, with the floor and the.
Yeah, we've got some stuff on.
And then it'll get you through Christmas at least, you know, it's fine.
I mean, we only use it for a month and a half, so even if it's stored offsite, we can always bring it here for Christmas.
Right.
In the meantime.
In the meantime, we can still take a look, see what's in there, start to, ideas of what the cost is. So, it's not like it's a dead issue, but maybe get delayed by fishing.
Is that it, Tom?
That's all I have, yeah.
Alright, Polly?
I promise I, it's not for me, I had a complaint about speeding on Main Street.
Okay.
And it wasn't me that's complaining.
Well, it's okay, it is.
It was another person.
Alright.
I told him, what, they stopped him to fly when I'm ready, and he told him they had no way to enforce it.
Well, it's a question of enforcement, they wanna roll it down to twenty five miles an hour.
But they didn't bring that up, they just were talking about the speed.
Yes, so the person who spoke to me, who else was the same person? Um twenty, they wanna go down to twenty five miles an hour, saying that even if we put twenty five mile an hour speed limits out. Even if there is no true way of enforcement from a town perspective, at least it's the appearance, right, somebody sees twenty five mile an hour, they may slow down. You know, just because, on Main Street.
I thought what?
Yeah.
Twenty five.
And it's twenty five.
Yeah.
That's what they were asking, is twenty five.
Give it to them.
Yeah.
Made in Tarrentine.
Unless they said something different.
She mentioned fifteen to me, but I told her the same thing you said, that we have no way to enforce what we've got, and it's speeding at twenty five.
Yeah.
So it's speed at fifteen, I'd think, too.
I would think fifteen, but I think too, that person's, that person's um thought process was, even if it was fifteen. Then if you drop into a place and you see fifteen miles an hour, it would at least make you think about the one fifteen.
First time.
The first time. So, uh yes, that did come up, I told that person that uh they could always come in and address council about it. I guess they chose not to, or made one evil, but I would guess, I think we had the same, the same person talking to us.
That was alright.
Alright, Alex?
Well, uh only thing I have is uh like today when I came in to sign for the the rental or the building. We're talking about the security out there with the key, and I think uh once we get all the security stuff going on and the door replaced. We need to really look at that keypad and how we give out uh a code to get into the key, cause it's the same code. But everybody knows it, we use it all the time, and we need to do something different.
Right, so, exactly, so what she's referring to is the code that come in and out of here.
Yeah.
Is often the same, because you're basically in the position of every time you rent it, you're changing the code and then.
Right.
Trying to keep up with thirty renters down the line, and which person had what code, right? So it's a little bit of a, little bit of an issue, what we do for sure is. Uh for instance, we're gonna have an election here coming up, we constantly change the code up for that. So not one person, except for me, has a code to come in and out. Um, so we're able to do it from that, but the the bigger challenge is gonna be, how do you have a code system, and Angie and I spoke about it a little bit today. About how do you have a code system that when we tell this renter, your code will be X, Y, Z, and D. And then we tell another renter, it may be something else and something else, we're constantly the way of trying to figure out what that code is. And for a bit that they forget the code, then how do we track back and say, your code is really this or that, and how do we do it? So it's got a little bit of a.
They have pins too, so in order to change that, you have to change it, so even if we do it every month. Somebody has to go in there and change the pins every month to a different.
Changing the code is not difficult, keeping up with what the code is for them, person to person is more of a challenge. But, I mean, there's some we can certainly, cause I think so, and I think too with the new security we're about to get, that may then make it easier in some respect to do that too.
It's a shame we couldn't do something like, I don't know, like a ho- like a hotel has like the key cards or something.
There's a smart lock box that actually has an app that say if Angie, like you can change the codes yourself from your telephone. And it also has logs that you can like see who's coming and going, and it's specifically for like Airbnbs. To be able to actively change the code daily, like between every renter. And so you start on like a sequential, like one thousand one or one thou- you start on whatever it is, or whatever you're comfortable with, but it's. I've used it before for lake houses, and it's very, it's very nice.
That's a thought.
It's a thought.
It's wifi.
I can see. I've, I've got thoughts on that too, but it's near the year north area, and that's at this point, okay, we'll go from there. But I, I hit the point, cause I think that's what we're trying to do as a whole, is to try to be better than where we are.
Yeah.
Right, but also at the same time, not trying to keep up with six months worth of who's got what code.
Yeah.
And that's also what we'd be running against as well.
Yeah.
So, how does that play?
And also, um, I'm, I think I missed about, what, um, one month just now, maybe six months ago, I was talking about using the splash to um. Try to do something like sidewalks in the school, cause I still see students walking on the side of the road, walking home. They have to walk in a ditch on somebody's property and leave a sidewalk from the school to, at least to the um, to the main line.
That road, if, I don't think I was here for that meeting, but I think if I understand that you were talking about putting sidewalks on one fifty four.
On the school down.
Yes, ma'am, and that's actually state road, so that would be more of a state issue as opposed to town's flaws.
Okay.
I said, you can't even put it on town property?
You can do, you're towns, you can do stuff on town property, but the the issue was, do we put sidewalks on State Route one fifty four?
Yes.
And that's a state road, and that's state property, so.
But the people could give an easement to let it go by? They must.
That's more of a question.
Lou asked me one time when I was saying about sidewalks, that, he may have been joking, he said, would you give up some of your property to have a sidewalk?
Who says that?
Blew back in the, back in, back in the day.
But part of your property is town property, so he may have been talking about that.
Yeah.
So, but the question that that Ms. Cynthia brought up was along the state roads, so I think it's a different handle.
Maybe, we can reach out, I can see if I can reach out somebody to like, you know, what it would take, or what the. Laws are, all that. All right. Alright Floyd, you've been talking all night.
Yeah, um, it's time to do that, now, the only thing I've got to say is, next meeting will be November, which will be Tuesday, November the twelfth. The reason it's an off date is where we would normally be scheduled on the fifth, that's going to be taken up for the election. And then November uh the eleventh is Veterans Day, of which are off, so the next available date for us is November the twelfth. So that's when the next council meeting is.
That's a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday, yes ma'am. And that's all I have, other than thank you, we have a lot of progress.
Yeah, so um, yeah, thank you guys for, this place is gonna be looking really good. Um, the only update I have is we have a new business in town, it is uh where TNT Antiques was, I'm sure you, she's got it decorated really cute. She's really nice, and she does um like painting and art parties, so, you know.
There you go.
That's it.
You wanna tell them about twelve parks?
You may have a better idea.
Just for you, and I'm not sure if it's gonna be the November meeting.
Okay.
Uh, or it'll be the December meeting, which you may have the same problem for December if there's any kind of runoff, but I don't think there will be.
Right.
But um, um, the uh twelve parks, uh the county is gonna be approving the subdivision plat. As you recall, there are eleven lots in twelve parks that are in the town limits. Uh so they're revising the plat at this point to show on the final plat those lots that are in the town. Uh we'll be coming forward with the. Uh, we'll be coming forward with the intergovernmental agreement with the county for the maintenance of that. Now, of course, the, the issue is gonna be, the county will do all of the maintenance and we'll just be responsible. For that part of the road that's within um the town, which covers, I guess, what, maybe. How big are the lots? I don't remember. Maybe it's less than eight hundred feet.
Right.
Of the roadway. There is one drainage structure that's in there that, on the maintenance event, but that'll be done on a pro rata basis. Obviously, if they ever replace the road, they'll repay, repay the process, gonna be twenty years then for the road. Uh, for the most part, so some of us wouldn't be here then, but uh, we'll have to put that.
Fix it yourself.
Well. We had put my mother-in-law in the hospital yesterday, um, and I'm not sure what, what went on, but she got released today and all the tests came back negative. Uh, but they were all surprised at, you know, her heart condition, she was not diabetic, she is. Other than having a hard time getting around uh for a ninety-eight-year-old, she.
Wow.
They were just, they kept sending nurses and doctors in to talk to her, because they, they said, you know, we just don't have people like you to come in. So, but anyway, uh, this will become uh either the November or the December meeting.
Okay. Cool. Alright, um, we don't have executive session. So um we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Tom made a motion, second.
Second.
Polly, the second, all in favor? Unanimous? Alright.
Thank you.
Yes, please. I know.
Uh, yes. You're talking about Barbara Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
I can't, I'm a person.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, you.
Everything.
Two.
Yes, absolutely. Forgive us, bro.
Sorry about your dad.
So, we, we talked about this several months ago, now we have that, that old ARCA money from that one here. Yes, we need to get that resolution, cause I say.
This is good, this is like.
Okay, what I would.
My god.
Thank you, Cynthia.
It was long till Big Heart came up.
You need to, guys, and it's called, we've done it. What I'll come through.
I got it.
The other.
Alright.
This Friday.
I love.
Yes, and then we'll come down and put that in the rest.
I've already got it, ninety-nine percent of it excluding with this right here.
Okay. I'll shoot it up. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll.
I'm on track.
Language we've been using in the.
Okay.
Small, no big heart.
Cause we've been getting ARCA money, opioid money, legal money. I mean, it's just. We, we must have heard the floor units lost some, some putting in that town hall, I think we're in good stead of doing it that way, right?
Okay, okay.